The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe. Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land in our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum, so we will continue. Our first presentation tonight is on energy efficiency by Community Service Department intern Mason.
Okay. Hi, my name's Mason. I'm an intern through CMU. I do some energy efficiency here. I've been working just on a bunch of different things on how we can make Mount Pleasant more energy efficient. So let's start with the, there's a need for energy efficiency and that's for several reasons. One big reason would be that utility costs are increasing statewide and Michigan is actually one of the worst in the Midwest for utility rates across all sectors, commercial, industrial, and residential. So being more energy efficient will in turn lower the bills that people have to pay on their utilities each month. Another big reason is that it better prepares us for the threat of climate change on Michigan, and that's going to look different in several different ways. There's droughts, stress on the Great Lakes, extreme weather events, crop failures with both corn and soybeans, and loss of native plants and animals. And that picture on the left right there is actually from Nelson Park a few years ago when that crazy rain happened. More events like that will take place as climate change continues to impact us. Energy efficiency promotes sustainable and more efficient use of pre-existing infrastructure and technologies, supports economic development from local to a national level, and also younger generations increasingly support programs and initiatives that help address climate change. And your energy efficiency is just one of those things that can help address climate change. And so there's several things that we can do to be more energy efficient. There's foundational things that need to take place before you get to big picture things. So you want to start with cataloging or benchmarking the energy consumption of buildings in Mount Pleasant, and another word for that would be energy audits. Then you also want to make changes to your energy consumption, and that could be turning off lights when you leave a room, unplugging devices that don't need to be plugged in all the time, stuff like that. Then also you want to educate the public on ways to make these changes so they can be more informed about this stuff. But then once you do that, you can move on to actually doing changes to buildings to make energy efficient improvements to residential, commercial, and municipal buildings. And you can also fix or upgrade aging infrastructure and equipment. And then once you do all that stuff, that's when you're in a better position to invest in renewables like solar, geothermal, wind, and bioenergy. And so one of the biggest things that in my research that I believe Mount Pleasant can do is to provide information to the public in an easy way that they can understand it. And when I first started this internship, a lot of the, it was a lot of information. There's a ton of incentives that people can get through rebates, tax credits, different programs, different programs to help people get solar. People, if they need help with weather, doing weatherization on their houses, there's just a, it's a ton of information and it's a little overwhelming. So if Mount Pleasant can figure out a way to provide this information in an easy to read, easy to understand, easy to access way that can put us on a good track for becoming more energy efficient. And so this is, one of the things I've been working on is like getting graphics to present this information. This one is specific to residential buildings for a customer that is Consumers Energy Electric and DTE Natural Gas. Most of the, particularly all of the people in Mount Pleasant are on that utility plan with those types of customers. This just presents cheap to, or no cost ways to be more energy efficient for your residential building, all the way up to very expensive like your solar and your electric vehicle. And so this would be a good example of something to put on the website or to put in a newsletter about how you can become more energy efficient. And it has information on these incentives that people can get through rebates through the utility companies. There's also tax credits, especially with solar. That's a big thing that happened with the Inflation Reduction Act, is there's federal tax credits for doing these changes. And so this is a commercial building. It's very similar to the residential building. It's just more focused on what is available to commercial buildings. It's not too different. It's just different types of rebates, different tax credits, all that stuff. And this is also just another way to look at some of the, just a very few of the incentives that are available. For example, you have the Energy Efficient Home Improvement Tax Credit. That is up to $3,200 for qualified improvements made to the home. You can have electric vehicle tax credit for $7,500. And actually, the residential and commercial both have tax credits on electric vehicles. And then some of the commercial ones is, it's very similar to how you have the Energy Efficient Home Improvement Tax Credit, the 179D Commercial Buildings Tax Deduction is just another federal tax incentive to make these changes to buildings. Then you also, you obviously have both of them, both commercial and residential apply, can qualify for rebates through Consumers Energy and DTE. That's one of the biggest ones that you can do right now. I don't have it in this presentation, but fairly soon, end of 2023, early 2024, there's going to be federal rebates on similar things that you can get rebased for through these utility companies like HVAC, insulation, windows, appliances, lightings, all that kind of stuff. But that's going to be through the federal, federal program. That's not officially ironed out yet. They still have to figure out how the states are going to get this money. But that would be coming within the next couple of years, for sure. Some other things that Mount Pleasant can look at is Solarize. Solarize is a program through the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association to help reduce the cost of installing solar. And that's done with group buy discount. So the more people that get in on the group buy, the higher the discount gets. And so the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association will work out a discount, pre-negotiated with a solar installer to get this discount working for people. It's actually, a couple cities in Michigan have taken advantage of this. One of the biggest one that I've found is actually Ann Arbor. They have a pretty big Solarize program. That picture right there is right from their website. So if this is something that Mount Pleasant chooses to do, it'd be good to provide this kind of information to people to know that if they want to get a group of their friends or their neighbors or whoever that is interested in getting solar, you just have a host and they'll, the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association will work with that group and then a solar installer to get that discount applied to it. And that is really helpful because solar is one of the better ways that we can do right now to become more energy efficient after you make these improvements to buildings. But also, a big thing about Solarize is that this would help Mount Pleasant achieve a Michigan Green Communities Challenge because I believe there is stuff in there that says to make it easier for people to get solar. And so this is just one example of something that Mount Pleasant can try to provide to people if they want to get solar. And that would also just check off a challenge. Another thing, and this one would be much more involvement from the City Commission on this one, is CPACE or Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's a financing tool that provides businesses with loans that they can use for energy efficient building upgrades or construction, renewable energy projects, water efficiency upgrades, and actually soon to be environmental hazard mitigation. Michigan is one of 38 states with PACE legislation, and our PACE group is called Lean and Green Michigan. There's several benefits to PACE funding. Some would be that there's no upfront cost of these loans and the loan covers the whole project. Studies show from Lean and Green and all across the country that property value increases when you have projects that have used PACE funding. And that's simply because you're becoming more energy efficient. That just increases the property value in turn. There's fixed interest rates with long loan terms, and that's done specifically to keep the monthly payments low. The loan runs with the land, so if the previous property owner wants to sell the property, but they're not done with the project, that loan will still be tied to that land so it can get that project done. And also, one big one that I've found is that Lean and Green will help locate contractors. Mount Pleasant, there's, there's a couple contractors, but especially with energy audits, it's hard to find around here. And so Lean and Green is actually, they have a locator map on their website, but also they would help reach out to contractors if, let's say you're probably outside of a service area or something. They can try to see if they can figure out something to get that contractor there if you need an energy audit. Because a lot of these projects, in order to start them, will require an energy audit to get an idea of what your, how much energy your building is using. And so where the City Commission would come in is how we actually get PACE to Mount Pleasant. And that would be where we pass a resolution of intent with a draft provided by Lean and Green, publish a PACE report, including who the authorized official would be. And the authorized official is the person in the City Hall who would approve projects to go to PACE for funding. And then finally, you would hold a hearing and then a vote on a resolution to establish. And once again, a draft would be provided by Lean and Green. And so after that, there's no more work that the city would have to do. The only other work after getting it established is have the authorized official send projects to PACE. After that, all the money goes through PACE, the whole project goes through PACE, everything else. They handle everything. And this would also help achieve Michigan Green Communities Challenge. One of the challenges says to provide a financial program to help people become more energy efficient. This, I, I think this would probably check off one of those challenges if we were to do that. Also important to include everyone. It's crucial to remember that most people can't afford these changes or even go for solar or electric vehicles. That stuff's fairly expensive. And so one thing that we can do is we can try to work with ACAP. They provide free energy audits and weatherization services to low-income housing, households, sorry. And then that picture on the right, actually, is their income guidelines for how you can qualify for that. And then also, the city can consider some level of support for working-class households to make these changes. It's also very important to collaborate with certain groups or people. Two big ones would be the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and Central Michigan. Those are two massive organizations that can help provide resources to make these changes. And also, it would help alleviate some of the work that would go into doing this because you have, they would be able to provide resources for that. But also, you want to work with commercial and residential property owners as well as renters, and then also the county. In order to be more energy efficient and fight climate change, we all have to contribute to the work. This would, figuring out ways to include everyone, especially low-income households, would achieve Michigan Green Communities Challenge once again. In there, there's stuff about environmental justice, which is closely tied to making sure poor and working-class people are not left behind as we're trying to make Mount Pleasant a better place. And finally, we have some next steps. There are several things that we can do going forward. Like I said earlier, the, one of the best things we could do is to provide concise and easy-to-understand energy efficiency information that will be seen by the most people possible. Make energy efficient improvements to all municipal buildings or properties. Gather a group of people who would be interested in Solarize, start a CPACE district in Mount Pleasant, and that's where the City Commission would come into play. And then, once we get a program more ironed out, you'd reach out to the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe or Central Michigan to see their thoughts on the program and how they would like to help. The Michigan Green Communities Challenge is something that the city is looking into, and much of what is presented here can help us achieve those goals. And so finally, energy efficiency will be the focus of the city's sustainability plan. And I guess, any questions?
Okay.
Yeah, go Maureen. You go.
You go.
Yeah. I wanted to say thank you, Mason, for your presentation. The work you're doing is incredibly vital, I think. And as you noted in your presentation, young people want to live in a community that's taking the climate crisis seriously and is focusing on these kinds of initiatives. I know that's something for myself. It sounds like something for yourself as well. So as we're looking to the future, this, these kinds of actions are incredibly necessary in the research you're doing. Very important. Thank you. I know just this past month, we've seen some of, seen record-breaking temperatures for global average highs. So it's been the hottest past month on record globally, which is very significant there. So actions like this allow us at the local level to help take control and have agency as we're dealing with these huge, big issues. So providing people ways that they can take action themselves and we can act at the local level is important. I wanted to ask, could you talk a bit more about what an energy audit would look like, I guess, at like the city level? I mean, a house is going to be different than like a city, essentially, do you know?
Okay, so there's, there's several things that can happen. Mainly, what will, there's a series of tests that can be done. It can, an energy audit can look different. Let's see, I'm trying to explain it the best way. It can range from you're going through your house and you feel an, an air leak in a window, and you physically feel it with your hand, or if your, the door is closed and you feel an air leak. Or if you see that your furnace is old, stuff like that. That would be a version of an energy audit. That would be considered one because you see, you're getting an idea. You don't have the exact numbers on stuff, but you get an idea that your home is probably not as energy efficient as it could be. But then you, that, that goes all the way up to, you can get this thing called a blower door test, which it like seals the, I don't know exactly how it works, but it seals the door and like a contractor will come in that, like with a machine that, it like, something with the pressure in the house. It's, it's like technology.
Gotcha.
But yeah, science and technology. But, and if that gets so like, that would be your best way of finding air leaks. So there's several different things that can be done. Replacing your, looking at your lighting of your house, stuff like that. It, it can involve a lot of stuff, or as limited as you can based on how much you want to pay.
Gotcha. Question for you on CPACE. So yeah, just to clarify, essentially, we establish a district, which we would just, for the City Commission, we would say the city of Mount Pleasant, and then applicants within that district would just submit their, like, proposals to the authority here at the city, and we would pass those along?
Yeah. So the thing with PACE is it, it's not required for people to do it if they don't want to. And that's, and because it's a loan, I think that's good because if some people just don't want a loan. I don't actually know the specifics on how it would get to the, the government to approve it for PACE funding. That's actually where, if you guys were interested in PACE, they would come here to do a presentation for you guys about that. And then also, in that presentation, they would provide the drafts for all the stuff that we need to do to actually officially set up a district. What, the goal of the City Commission is to officially invite them to set up a district here at no cost.
Gotcha. Last thing kind of for me is just, how long does your internship go for? How long are you?
My last day is next Friday.
Next Friday. Gotcha. Well, thank you for all the work you're doing. I really appreciate it. And I think there's definitely, I think we can, it'd be important to continue this kind of program. So thank you again, Mason.
I want to concur with my colleague here. This is absolutely, absolutely excellent work. Good research, detailed information, and significant. We do need information like this if we're talking about sustainability and surviving in the future. And we, you know, agree that climate change is here. Whether or not we have our heads in the sand like ostriches, or we're looking up, it is here. It's unavoidable, and we need to face it. And how do we face it? And so some of the recommend, I do like the recommendations that you have made, and the fact that you are considerate of the, you know, the diversity in terms of income ranges and who, you know, how people can be included in this particular process. A question that I have for you, however, is, you know, looking at the issue of solarization, do you have a sense of how much it might cost on the average one individual to solarize their property or their home?
Okay, so for...
Maybe a range?
It's expensive. The cheapest I've seen for one that will work for your average household is about $15,000. But, and then that ranges up to the upper, for most, the higher level, most of them would go up to $30,000 at the very max, but I'm sure there's some specific projects that are way more than that. The thing with PACE is that it would, it would help cover that specifically for commercial. Unfortunately, that's not for residential. They have research that says that residential PACE actually didn't work out, but commercial PACE has actually been, everything that I've seen, they've seen, it's actually very successful to help businesses specifically make these changes. But it is fairly expensive. I do actually, not on this presentation, unfortunately, I have more examples about a pricing example for Solarize, a Solarize program example. It was a, I believe, a couple thousand for the upper, when there's more people in the discount. It did take a couple thousand off of it for the discount. But I would say about $15,000 to about $30,000. It would be your average range.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Regarding, you talked about energy audit. Besides somebody walking around and, you know, testing their property or their house to find out where the leakages are, you know, are there, do you know of people in town who might readily do an energy audit for individuals? I do know that DTE provides some comparable, you know, detail or graph of one's expenses, you know, monthly or quarterly in comparison to, you know, similar homes in the area. So there are people besides DTE that one could easily call to do that.
So what you're talking about, they have, both DTE and Consumers Energy do have, it is free for their customers to get an energy audit, or they call it an energy consultation. The thing with those is, there's a couple of things. If you've had one previously, you do not qualify for, I don't know if you can get one that is paid, that you pay for it, but you do not qualify for a free one if you've already had one. And that's true with both the utility providers. And also, their energy audits do not, they're not as comprehensive as one with a private contractor would be. They don't include a blower door test. DTE does, however, have a rebate on a blower door test, but you'd have to use a DTE, like, partnered contractor. And on their website, they have a little locator for that. There is not a DTE energy audit contractor in the Mount Pleasant area, unfortunately. So I don't know how that would work out. So those, those utility providers, they do have an energy audit program that you can use that is free for people that are customers for them. With Consumers Energy, you're going to look at a mainly electrical-focused energy audit, and it's not going to do stuff that would be natural gas, which DTE would take care of. Both of them also do provide free product installation, LED bulbs wrapped for the furnace, stuff like that. But there is one business in Mount Pleasant that we did find that does energy audits, that does include blower door test, all the stuff that would be more comprehensive. I did reach out to him. I'm still waiting to hear back. I'll probably call him tomorrow about that to see what he would, if he would be willing to partner with the city on providing like a discount on a group or something, something like that. But there is one business local that is able to do more comprehensive energy audits.
Okay. So I'm going to complicate your life just a little bit. So is it possible just, you know, for layperson, this is absolutely wonderful information, but it might be a lot for a layperson to unpack? Maybe provide us with a condensed infographic?
Oh, yeah.
That we could put on the city's website or place somewhere that people can access easily?
Yeah. So I've actually already been working on stuff. I don't have it on this computer. But what you're talking about, I do have like drafts of things. I do have made-up graphics, flyers, stuff like that. And they're, they're actually pretty easy to make because once you get the information, and I've looked at it enough, I'm like, oh yeah, that goes here. But I have been doing that already, yeah.
Okay. Just, just for residents, you know, they'll just go, yeah, it's what you need to do, at least start there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect.
I just want to clarify for myself. The Solarize program, which would be a, a community-led initiative, that didn't really, it would basically be up to the City Commission to introduce the idea, but it almost sounds like something that it would be like Friends of Solar Energy in Mount Pleasant that would initiate this for private residents. Is that kind of how Ann Arbor did it, or?
So I have a more in-depth explanation of this on a more, much longer presentation. But Solarize, I believe, and I would have to confirm this, but I'm fairly certain, it doesn't have to go through the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association. It can be anyone that is willing to host the group. That's what it is. It can be a local government, it can be a resident, it could be a business. So it wouldn't really be, I mean, the job of the City Commission for that would be to provide the information that, hey, this is something that if you are looking into solar or interested in solar, this is something you can gather your neighbors, your friends, your business colleagues that want to potentially get a group discount on solar, on a solar installation. And the reason I mentioned the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association is because, well, two reasons. One is that in May, they did a, there was a solar town hall right in this room that they discussed their Solarize program. And that's actually where I got the pricing example on the other presentation. That's where I got that information from. And also, they're just known for doing it. They've done a couple hundred, like, separate projects with the Solarize, like rain, big, big to small, stuff like that. So I, it would be easier if they were very, if they played a part in doing the Solarize. But it, the City Commission wouldn't have to necessarily establish it. It's just, if you wanted to... wouldn't have to necessarily establish it. It's just, if you wanted to, um, provide the information to the public, that's what, that's where you'd come into play.
So then the second part of this is that the, the PACE program does have to have a designated body or district. So that doesn't necessarily have to be the city. Theoretically, it could be the county, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So with that, it's so, uh, to get, so for PACE, if the, if Isabella County wanted to set up PACE, Mount Pleasant would automatically, uh, fall in, on, under the district. But I've reached out to them, and they, uh, they're, they might be slow at responding. I don't know. I just, I'm presenting the information here because it is something that Mount Pleasant can do now if we wanted to. And, uh, uh, we did meet with Leanin Green, Michigan. Uh, it doesn't take that long. Once the interest is there, they, they'll come here to help us set up a district. It would, no cost to the city, uh, limited work, uh, uh, after it's established. Um, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mason.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Good job.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna move on to the presentation of the 2023 Midyear Goals and Objectives. Manager of Dissents.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Perschbacher. Let me swap out presentations here. Let's see. Mason has a gift for being able to convey a lot of information, some really nice infographs. I unfortunately have not been blessed with such gifts, so.
We should forgive you.
So, uh, I hope you all bear with me with my Excel spreadsheet here. That's the age I grew up in. So, uh, thank you very much, everyone. I'm just gonna go over our six-month goals and objectives, position for our goals and objectives for 2023. Uh, so, on the far-right column is our second quarter update, which was at the end of June. I've also indicated in the left-hand column, a bit of color coding over here. Uh, black really just designates the high-level goal, but the updates I'm going to give are on all of the other goals and objectives underneath it. Green indicates goals or objectives that we have completed at this point. Yellow indicates those items that we are still working on. There is one red in here which indicates that we're going to have to take a change in strategy or delivery timeline, which I will go over with the city commission. So, to start, we're gonna talk about our first goal, maintain the stable, financially responsible, uh, operations of the city. Uh, first off, that is to identify future sites for commercial and industrial development. Staff has taken a look at what we have within the city for future, in particular, large-scale development is what we're looking at. And a couple of sites come to mind. The first site that comes to mind is CMU RC. In discussions with the CMU RC staff as well as CMU administration, their goal with that property is to maintain a sort of lease program with it. The university is not interested in, um, resolving control or anything like that of the property. And so that does meet part of the market that's out there for future, future potential development. However, it doesn't mean everything, such as if a developer wanted to purchase the property. So staff is currently looking at properties within the city that could be purchased for a large-scale commercial or industrial development. Uh, so we're continuing to work on that. Review rates to ensure that they are affordable while sustaining our infrastructure. We have a few different parts to this. The water study, uh, is to be completed by the end of, we have quarter two here, but we believe that we should have that here within the next month. The sewer study has been completed for this year, and that'll be reflected in our 2024 proposed budget. And then rec fees, it does say quarter one on here. We are reviewing that more in-depth with staff, and we will have that to the city commission with a 2024 budget proposal. Stay on track with the Water Resource Recovery Facility Upgrades Project. Phase one is on schedule. And further develop our infrastructure asset management to ensure long-term success, we moved onboard with a new asset management software. However, the implementation over at the WRF is a little bit slower due to some of the construction projects we have out there. But we anticipate that will be completed by the end of the year. Explore options and develop a plan for long-term stormwater asset management. So this has been an interesting development for the city commission members that were, uh, around at the end of 2021, quarter four of 21. We were presented with findings from a third-party consultant related to our storm sewer infrastructure. And on average, they were saying the city would need about twenty million dollars over a twenty-year period. Staff's taken a look at the data that they have, and we realized that the consultant had estimated the infrastructure on a very conservative basis. So staff had some disagreements with the way they had assessed certain things. And in our summation, we're looking at more half of that. We're looking at, it will likely require about ten million dollars over the twenty-year period, uh, that that study takes a look at. And so, you, again, you can cut that, that fact, or that, uh, number in half. And so instead of roughly one million dollars per year, you have a price of about five hundred thousand dollars per year. If you will recall, in 2022, we had allocated the debt service that was originally designed for the Borden Building reconstruction here. When that debt term expired, we reallocated the half mill dedicated to it towards storm sewer infrastructure. So we have about two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year dedicated to that. Staff feels fairly confident that we'll be able to deliver the gap in financing through a number of different means, either looking at streets or capital improvement funds, or looking at grants as well, too. More to come with our 2024 proposed budget. Continue to improve IT security, and this is something that the staff did a great job of knocking out very early this year. In quarter one, we onboarded our Office 365, uh, onboarding, and that got completed. Our SEEM, which is, uh, a, um, essentially a security measure to help protect our network, that was onboarded and upgraded in twenty, in early, uh, quarter one of 2023. And then our training is ongoing throughout the organization, so we're always trying to stay vigilant against whatever the next wave of attack may be. Review expenditures to make sure we are spending in appropriate areas. Uh, so we are going to include a number of recommendations to the city commission, and that will be in quarter three of 2023 with our 2024 proposed budget. Provide a quality employee experience from recruitment through retirement. Recruitment's an interesting, uh, venture right now, because from what I last heard, for every individual who's currently looking for a job, there are two available in this economy right now. So that's become an interesting challenge. Uh, we do have quarterly turnover reports that we are receiving. I might highlight that our quarterly turnover report for quarter two was seven point two one percent. That was eight individuals who had left the organization in, uh, quarter two of 2023. Uh, we had of that, I believe, five of which were retirements, and we had three individuals who sought alternative careers. Evaluate benefit offerings, vendors and contracts as needed. Select providers to expand and diversify our employee benefit offerings to aid in the attraction and retention of a diverse workforce. So tonight, we are gonna be talking about one of our contracts with our, uh, brokerage firm for insurance. Uh, and then we're also talking about our, we'll be talking about our third-party administrator later in 2023, when the city receives responses for our, from our request for proposals. Our next goal is to continue positive and productive relationships with community partners and residents and businesses. Evaluate the Social Crisis Advocate Program with RISE to ensure continued success of the program. So we have taken a look at that, and we've determined that the program is highly essential to the services that our Public Safety, uh, Division provides. And so we are looking at a number of ways in which we might be able to expand those offerings into 2024, and that proposal will be with the 2024 proposed budget. Continue regular meetings with Central Michigan University, County Township, and Tribe. So a lot of these things are ongoing. Um, and you'll see a lot of these goals and objectives are also just ongoing things. Spending in the right areas, making well-informed decisions. Those are the kinds of things that we regularly do. One thing I wanted to highlight here that staff is really proud of is our peak programming and the partnership with the tribe. This includes summer field trips to three, of all three sites, to the Elijah Elk Seventh Generation Program, where they participate in a wide variety of education programs. We also have tribal members that come to our various peak sites throughout the school year and summer, and they come for storytelling and for drum circles. So staff's really proud of that partnership that we've been able to offer. Partner with county to upgrade the material recovery facility. So this is going to be an ongoing item as well, too. It's not likely we're gonna be wrapping this up in 2023, and it'll likely ca, take until 2024. The, uh, committee that is responsible with moving forward with the MRF is taking a look at what possibilities exist for greater economies of scale for receiving materials at that facility in order to make it more economic for, um, uh, a greater expansion of those facilities. And so we look forward to hearing more from them later. And continue to work with the diverse community groups. We have a number of them that we work with here, and, uh, in particular, Chief Loria works very close with the Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Group, as well as the Human Rights Committee, and meets with them on a monthly basis. Provide safe accommodations for pedestrians and bicyclists. And this is where you'll see our first red item on here. And so, uh, definitely warrants talking about explore financing options and construction of the MMP GKB Trail. The goal of this was to acquire fifty percent or more of the funding through grants, and I am happy to report that we are successful in that venture. We did receive word that, uh, the city will receive an MDOT grant for the trail project in particular. However, that warranted that the city had to go through an environmental review, uh, along the trail's planned construction route. I'm happy to report that we have completed that environmental review and that we've been given a green light from the state, but because of where we're at currently within the construction season, rather than being able to deliver this in 2023, this will have to be constructed in 2024. So, just to push back on that scheduling. Add sidewalk in 2023 is identified on the capital improvements plan. We completed the sidewalk on Birch Street earlier this year. Maintain and replace bad sidewalk and continue to implement the complete streets plan. So we continue to do that throughout the year, spending what's allocated within the budget. Create a community-friendly space in the downtown area, and these are two goals that I'm very happy to say that we've completed. First off, we're, we were able to complete a downtown master plan, and that went to the city commission for consideration and adoption right at the end of the first quarter here. Uh, city staff is moving forward with implementation. And then pursue funding for town center redevelopment. The city is the recipient, or will be the recipient, of a reward of one million dollars through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for that project. Provide a great park system and expand our sports, events, and recreation program offerings. We have two goals under this one, conduct a recreation needs assessment. So early in quarter one of this year, we had identified as a means of trying to control costs that we would do this in-house. However, um, the city also had the opportunity to realize some cost savings in the merger of our parks and recreation departments, formerly separate departments, now underneath one single department and underneath one single individual for leadership. Um, so that's created a cost savings, and so we've reallocated those cost savings towards completing a recreation needs assessment with one of the larger firms in the country that does this. So we'll be conducting serving of, surveying of the community to identify the current needs for recreation programming, the things that we are meeting, the things that we are doing well, and the things that maybe we lack. And then through that surveying, we'll be identif, we'll be able to identify ways that we can close those gaps in service. Next one is to prepare a park maintenance plan. So this is a focus on physical space. This is maintaining and operating the current physical spaces that we have, and we anticipate delivery of that very soon, within the next month or two. Create a sense of place by promoting the "meet here" branding and working to become a cool destination. Thicker Communications Department has done a really great job in, uh, starting to tell the Mount Pleasant story, and in particular, really focusing in, uh, Mount Pleasant is a place to do business. And so that campaign started right around the end of last year, and, uh, we've continued to do more social media promotion, more video promotion, uh, also video promotion on the website as well, too. We also continue to utilize other media such as, um, radio, podcasts, et cetera. Address the housing market demands in our community, including homeownership opportunities. This really circulates around three different programs that we focused on here in Mount Pleasant. One is the pilot program, which you will be, uh, will be subject of a discussion later at our work session this evening. The second one is the NEP, and the NEP, or, I'm sorry, not NEP, the NEZ, Neighborhood Enterprise Zones. Uh, that program in particular, we're going to be coming back to the city commission after further consideration of this one. We feel it's a really great tool that can be utilized to help homeowners afford the cost of improvements to their home. Uh, but we want to make sure that we're utilizing it in a way that's very impactful, one that targets the, um, I would say, the right neighborhoods within Mount Pleasant where the need is greatest, and then also making sure that there's obviously a significant enough return on investment for the homeowner as well, too. And then lastly, it was, uh, the incentives for the sale of current rental properties to become homeowner-occupied properties. Uh, the city commission, we had discussed that at a work session, and based on previous performance of that program, we, uh, decided to not move forward with that program. That comes into the next goal, develop a long-term sustainable plan to ensure all housing needs are met within the community. That ties into the incentive programs that we had just discussed, but also in particular, we're looking at our zoning ordinance and wanting to identify at least one text amendment or map amendment in 2023 related to housing. And our planner, Manuela, has really moved forward with a number of, uh, different recommendations for the planning commission that are going to be considered, uh, for increasing density and also affordability of housing within the community. Continue the neighborhood enhancement program. So this is something that we are continuing, or I should say, the Public Safety Division is doing a fantastic job of continuing into 2023. One thing of note here, I know we had the goal of trying to impact twenty different properties with MISTDA grants and city matching funds. This was with, uh, an application for a much larger sum that we had to MISTDA. MISTDA was giving away some of these larger grants for a million dollars. The city was not a recipient of those funds, though we were recipient of our regular NEP funds. I believe we received about seventy-five thousand dollars. So with that and the city funds that we have, we're able to affect eight properties in 2023. Maximize economic viability on Mission Street. Uh, in particular, we were looking at hiring a consultant and evaluating design elements for Mission Street improvements to make more, to make it more business attractive. Uh, also with the goal of becoming more pedestrian-friendly on Mission Street. Now, we had met with MDOT, and initially, their plan was to gather data in quarter two of 2023. That did not take place. MDOT was not able to utilize the manpower to gather the data. But in discussing a follow-up strategy with MDOT, they identified a data set that they had that they could still use to model different ideas. This could be anything from, and they're gonna look at a few different things, from boulevards to roundabouts, et cetera. They're gonna look at all sorts of different design elements for Mission Street that would calm some of the traffic, that would become more pedestrian-friendly, and identify what would work within the corridor. And when I say what would work, the idea is what would maintain what we have down there in terms of daily traffic counts, but also accommodate safe pedestrian travel as well, too. And so they'll get that modeling done. That modeling will come back to the city on what works and what doesn't work. And then it'll be up to the city to have community discussions to engage in, what are we most comfortable with? Are there elements that work, but we're not comfortable with? And so we can make those determinations and give that public feedback back to MDOT. So that'll be ongoing throughout this year. Prepare the Mount Pleasant Center for future development opportunities. Work toward a clean title for the property, and we are currently moving forward with that. Uh, move forward with the archaeological study. I've been in discussions with representatives from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan, and they want to propose an, um, just some amendments to how we move forward with that archaeological study. And so we anticipate those propos, that proposed amendment, uh, here for the city's review, probably pretty soon here. And then, um, lastly, prepare for the creation of a general development plan and strategy for the property, and that will come when the above two are completed. And so that takes us through essentially all of our goals and objectives for 2023. And so with that, I'd ask if there are any questions.
I'll jump in real quick. Um, going back to discussion on stormwater, you mentioned that the consultant, um, that we had originally worked with had a more conservative approach that led to the twenty million dollar estimate. Can you talk about, like, what, defining that conservative approach versus, like, how we, because, I mean, having that budget, not that is not good. Ten million's a lot better than twenty million, but how did we get to there?
I'm gonna call in an expert on this one. Uh, that would be our Public Works Director, Jason Moore.
You know, the best people, Aaron. Thank you.
Yeah, so as we looked at the data that was in that study, um, we actually, we've got televising of a lot of the storm sewer mains in the city. And what that report did was it compiled all that information based- And what that report did was it compiled all that information based on the coding that the technicians did as they were doing that videotaping. And once we examined that in closer detail, it was found that some of those things were coded, some of them were straight up miscoded, I would say, others were just maybe a little overzealous with how bad they were rating these things based on our experience and how long these things last and that sort of thing. So I think we, a lot of the change is due to the refinement of that data, looking at it in closer detail. So.
Okay, my question is related.
Oh, yeah. While we got Jason up here, if you want to jump in, that was kind of my question.
Yeah, unless you have a follow-up to that.
My next one was about housing. So yeah, no, you're good.
Okay, so my question is actually related because with the reduction of cost, you know, I'm curious to know, or I'm wondering how the current increase in materials might affect the projected costs that you have now.
Yeah, that number, I mean, these are estimates, and so by nature, they're, you know, they're as accurate as we can be, but you know, when you're talking about these timeframes, I think you're going to have to examine those on a regular basis to make sure that you're, you know, putting appropriate funds toward these capital items.
And you did indicate that we have about $250,000 dedicated to?
Yeah, on an annual basis, the city commission had dedicated about $250,000 towards the replacement or upgrade of storm sewer infrastructure.
Okay. All right. Okay, so may I ask the next question, or would you like to go?
You're good. Please go ahead.
Okay, we're doing a tag team thing here. All right. So the other has to do, City Manager, Hala Desens, you talked about the 7.23, I think it is turnover, right?
Oh, yes.
So I'm curious, do we have, do we conduct any kind of exit interviews when people leave? You know, if they're retiring, I suppose there's no need to do an exit interview. But if they just, do we conduct any exit interviews?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I'm not going to ask what the exit interviews reveal, but you can tell us later if you want to.
Okay.
All right.
Just jumping back in then real quick. It was talking about offering funding for housing, like housing improvements. I believe the number was eight of 20. Our goal was like to improve 20 households, and we hit eight. There was a lot of just information in that. I just wanted to clarify. It sounded like kind of the reason we didn't have to reach that goal yet is largely due to like the funding we didn't get from grants we were hoping to get, but.
Correct, yeah, that's exactly it. So you got to think, when we developed the goals and objectives, it's quarter one the previous year, and we were looking at an opportunity of applying for about $1 million in MISTDA funding to do some significant upgrades to people's houses. The idea, being able to spend roughly $50,000 per house at that rate, we were not able to get the $1 million in funding from MISTDA, but we were able to get an allotment of $75,000.
Okay, yeah, I just, there's a lot of information, so I wanted that clarification there. Thank you.
I have one more question. This has to do with the expansion of, or at least the continuation of the work of the trauma clinician with DPS, Director Lauria. You were talking about it's a very important position, and I'm glad that we have it because it's absolutely, absolutely necessary. So, and you did talk about, you know, continuing it, possibility of, you know, exploring possibilities of continuing it. So do you have a sense of what possibilities you might be exploring or you're thinking about besides grants?
Yeah, so what we're looking at, one, it will be continued, so not just the possibility, but definitely the continuation of the program and its current structure. But what we are looking at is the possibility of expansion. So we're just looking at, you know, to what degree do we need that? How many hours, the cost, et cetera? So we're just putting all of the information on the table. What's the best way to achieve that?
Are we thinking of one person, continuing with one person, or adding another person?
We're looking at all options right now.
Okay, so we should look forward to that, you know, exploratory information later on?
Correct. So it's our goal to have a definitive answer to the city commission along with the proposed 2024 budget.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hi, thank you, Manager Desens.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda that the commission would like to Seeing none, can I entertain, have an entertaining motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Agenda will continue. We are on public input on agenda items. If you have come to speak on something that's on the agenda, you may step forward to the podium. You'll be asked to say your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. When you are brought into the meeting, you will be asked your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to come to the podium? Oh, we have a taker.
Hi. So I'm Amanda Brake. I work at One West Mosher for the Housing Commission. I was asked to come in and tell you thank you for pursuing the extension of pilot programming for our community. I can tell you, as a Section 8 voucher coordinator, there's about a five-year wait for my recipients, and a lot of that has to do with the lack of housing that's available in our community. So bringing in new businesses that can create affordable housing for our families is our number one priority, and we just want you to know we appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom and no one on this.
Okay. We will close the public input and move on to receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Desens.
Receipt of petitions and communications includes minutes of the planning commission from June, the second quarter investment report, and resignation of Erin White from the Zoning Board of Appeals term to expire December 31, 2023.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to consent items. Are there any items on the consent section that we would like to move into the regular All right, seeing none, Manager Desens.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July 10, 2023, consider contract renewal with Brown &amp; Brown for insurance broker services, consider approval of a trade-in through the purchase buyback program, and approve the purchase of a vehicle for the police department, $42,800, consider resolution and support of Michigan Arts and Culture Council 2024 Arts Project Mini Grant Paint the Pavement Application for $4,000, receive an ordinance to amend city code regarding international property maintenance code, and consider setting a public hearing for August 14, 2023 on the same, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will now move on to the public hearing. Our public hearing is on the development district license for JCB Entertainment Valhalla Indoor Axe Throwing. Manager Desens.
So JCB Entertainment is looking to have a development district license for serving alcohol at their proposed location. This was subject of discussion at our last city commission meeting. As part of that process, the city commission is required to hold this public hearing this evening for people to come forward to comment on the project. At the end of the public hearing, staff is recommending approval of the resolution that is included in your city commission packet as the business meets all of the requirements to get a development district license.
All right, as a public hearing, the public is allowed to come forward to the podium and state your interest or non-interest in this. You will be asked your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, which I think nobody's joining us by Zoom, and then I'm just going to forego that whole spiel. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the public hearing for Valhalla Indoor Axe Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any clarification questions that this commission has? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Does it need to be read specifically?
I don't have my packet in front of me. That was a big thing.
I think it's to approve the resolution for Valhalla for the DDA.
I move that we've approved the resolution for the DDA license for JCB Entertainment, otherwise known as Valhalla Indoor Axe Throwing, and approve resolution for the same.
Hey, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, is there discussion?
I have a question since I wasn't here when this was discussed. Last, excuse me. This is perhaps, Manager Desens, might provide some input here. I'm curious to, I would like to understand the staff's, you know, besides meeting the requirements, what other criteria did the staff use to say, yeah, to, you know, approve this?
Yeah, actually, if I can call up our downtown director, Michelle Sponcello, she'll be able to talk you through. She's much more familiar with the process than I am.
Okay, cool.
Hello. So I just want to make sure I understand, the question is, beyond the criteria from the state of Michigan that's required, did I weigh in on issuing the license?
Yeah, yeah, convince me besides using the state of Michigan.
Sure, the short answer is no, I don't intercede in those. If they meet the qualification, that is up to this commission.
Okay, so that's it.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, again, since I wasn't here when the conversation was happening, so is that going to be?
Yes, actual axe throwing. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I believe that there are.
Did we talk about, did you discuss issues of safety, security?
That would have been probably discussed with a special use permit, and I understand that Manuela is here, so not to bring tag team and bring her up, but I don't review those issues that may have come up in the special use permit through the planning commission, although I don't want to say for sure that may have been part of the discussion.
Again, I want to apologize because I was doing a conference on genocide when this was happening, so I'm asking, I need clarity.
And Manuela, you want to come forward?
I'll stand here just in case. So this use is actually allowed as a right, so it's an entertainment use in the zoning ordinance. However, because of the application considering a liquor license and the serving of alcohol, it triggered a bar special use permit. So they did come forward to the planning commission, was this June? Yeah, or July, sorry, memory is fuzzy a little bit. But they came forward for the special use permit process with the planning commission. They have to demonstrate that the use is not going to impact adjacent properties. Security wise, the planning commission did not ask that particular question that you asked. Valhalla is a company that has other locations in the country, in the state, so they actually provide the experience for families, believe the minimum age maybe 14 years old, all the way to professionals. So they also would have competitions here being held in the community, which is very exciting because it may generate some more traffic and visitors to come by, and that will be, as you know, the first location here in town. But I believe that they have, you know, standards on safety, and the way it works is you have aisles, kind of, I personally would compare that to bowling alleys, so you have separate spaces that you would be in a certain distance and then throw the axes on a particular target. But that's the general gist of it. It helps.
All right, yeah, that helps, you know, okay.
Are there any other questions?
I just have a comment to ease Commissioner Ake's mind, that I got to participate in this one time, and it was very safe.
This is something new to me, too, so I did my own research.
Okay, good.
And when you think about alcohol and axes, it goes against kind of logic, but the way this company does it, or the way it's done, and specifically with this company, I don't have any concerns.
Okay, I'm glad you're weighing in, Director Lauria, because again, you know, I just wanted to know about, you know, safety, not just simply for residents, but this is also a college town with a lot of young people, so, okay, thank you again.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions or comments before we go to vote? All right, we will do a roll call.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Altseger?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will move on to, there's no new business, so we'll move on to the announcements on city-related issues and new business. My understanding is that Commissioner Wingard has something to show us.
Yeah, thank you for your time, you guys. I just wanted to do some follow-up with the community garden over in Horizon Parks. Mostly just compiled some pictures I've been taking during this process. Let's see. So, yep, the park is over in Horizon Park, kind of looking at just the general map that we approved. On the bottom left corner is the general layout, so 15 garden beds, and there is space for additional beds in the future if we're looking for that. But I just want to say, I think the garden has been going pretty well, and we've been seeing a lot of interest in it. I know just from people walking by, you have people of all ages coming through, just kind of showing, we have a small shed, water spigots there and everything, so irrigation works well, kind of just going through some of the different gardens, just kind of show and tell right now. But I wanted to thank the commission for working on this, and then thanks to the Parks Department especially for making sure this worked well and providing the resources. I think this is a project we could definitely expand on in the future, and I think if we can capitalize on some of the interest gained from just having it sitting out and people walking by, we could move to other parks within the city as well. I think that there'd be a lot of interest in that. So just again, just a quick update, showing off some pictures and everything, but I guess if anyone had any questions, wanted to make that available. No?
Just a quick question, how does your garden grow?
My garden's been going good, except for the rabbits. If you look on the right-hand side, you'll see rainbow charted, that's growing, that was never eaten by us. It was all eaten by rabbits, so, other than that, it's been going pretty well. But anyway, thank you, guys.
Let's go ahead.
Oh, yeah, Liz.
Has there been anything bad or negative, though? Like, I'm just curious, because community gardens do sometimes have a drama around them for one reason or another.
I would say the two worst things, or a couple worst things I've seen, is at one point I thought someone was growing mint in one of the beds. They weren't. They had it in a separate container. That's a very invasive species and can spread like wildfire, so I was glad not to see that it wasn't in the bed itself. Some kids were playing with hoses at one point, which.
Nobody like harassing each other's gardens or-
Not harassing the gardens or anything, yeah.
No, this used to, I used to manage a community garden on, on Pine Street, and we would, we would field complaint after complaint after complaint, and maybe it was a function of where it was, more in a neighborhood, but people were like, it's a community garden, doesn't that mean I just get to get it? And like, no, that's somebody else's, get it.
I think if anything, a few gardens have been helped along by other people taking care of them.
That's amazing.
At different points, watering, but anyway, Maureen.
All right, thank you very much for taking care of my garden.
You're welcome.
For watering my garden, but as a matter of fact, oh, that's my garden, no, that's not, no, that's not mine. But as a matter of fact, I see a lot of possibilities, you know, you know, with this garden. I was there this past weekend and a family walked by, in fact, it was the kid who walked in because he saw me gardening, and he wanted to know what I was doing, and we had a conversation where the parents then asked if, you know, this would be available next year, and they wanted to call ahead of time and reserve their own plot, so that they wouldn't miss the opportunity next year. You know, there have been kids who have come in to assist, you recall, when I was planting my garden, I had about four, five kids who decided, yeah, to come in, you know, and, you know, help. But I do see a possibility of a community engagement, you know, where we do some perhaps collaboration between parks and recreation and, you know, the MSU for each group to do a program for kids, because I spent Saturday explaining to this kid what the plans were, and he kept asking, what do you use them for, you know, when are they ready, can I pick them now, how do you plant them? And perhaps that's one way of engaging young people, you know, because it is there, and maybe getting people who are gardening there to come and talk about their plans and why you've chosen to, you know, to plant certain things in your garden. So I, I, I think there is tremendous possibility, you know, to do that, but also it's a way to bring the community, you know, in contact with, you know, other people. So I, again, I want to say thank you, like my colleague, to say thank you that, you know, to Parks and Rec for doing that, especially Manager Desents, who went to work on this. Thanks, and for watering my garden.
You're welcome. Any other questions or anything I could answer for anyone?
I would also like to thank Commissioner Wingard for watering my garden.
The first day, we got the hose and it just moved off the water tank and everything, the water pressure was immaculate, it was a great day. I can only imagine one day I'll have a riding lawnmower and my neighbors will be happy about that too, so, anyway, thank you all.
Well done, very generous.
Are there any other announcements on city-related business or new business?
May I?
Yes.
City of Mount Pleasant and the Isabella County Human Rights Committee are collaborating to host a peace event in September.
Yes.
It's September 23rd, I believe, so we will have some flyers available, we actually do have flyers available, but we'll hopefully provide additional information, you might see some of those fly. It's a Saturday, more like the last Saturday in September, so it is open to the public, you know, you're welcome to come, there'll be music, we have a human library, we'll have, you know, people in the community talking about what it means, you know, to have peace and what they have done to contribute to peace, and it is done in commemoration of the International Peace Day.
Any other announcements? All right, we're going to move on to the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If there's anyone out in the public that wishes to speak, you may come to this podium, you'll state your name and address, and we'll be giving you five minutes. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak at this time? Oh, Steve. I wondered why you were coming out from behind that door.
Me too.
Greetings, I'm Steve, I work at Mactv at 312 West Michigan. There was mention earlier about the Solar Town Hall meetings, and those are on YouTube, and I'll explain how you can find them. If you do a search for Mount Pleasant Solar Town Hall, there are two of them that happened in this room, and so they are searchable at MT Pleasant Solar Town Hall, and they're on Marie Koper's channel on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward? All right, then I will close the public comment. We have a work session, which will be followed by a closed session before we adjourn. Do we wish to take a recess at this time, or do we want to move forward?
Five minutes, please.
Five minutes? All right, we will take a five-minute recess, we'll return at 8:19. We're going to have a discussion on payment in lieu of taxes program. Manager Desents?
Yeah, I can tee us up for the evening. City staff released an RFP earlier this year for proposals from developers based on the city's pilot policy. This evening, we're joined by Sean McMickel of Spire Development, who will present their proposed development. Following the presentation, the city commission is free to ask any questions related to the proposal. Consideration of this proposal is then on for official consideration from the city commission on our agenda for Monday, August 14th. With that, if I can, I would love to turn it over to the developer to talk about their proposal.
All right.
Good evening, I'm Sean McMickel with Spire Development, and thank you for having me this evening. I wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about Spire Development and the type of projects that we build, and then also the tax credit housing program and the reason for the pilot request, and why that's necessary to steward affordable housing projects. And then I did want to address the, the proposal and answer any questions that you may have. So Spire Development is a affordable housing developer, we develop for both seniors and for working families, and we purely do rental housing through the tax credit program. It's a federal program that is administered through the state, through Mishta in the state of Michigan. Spire has projects across the Midwest, we have projects in Ohio, West Virginia, Kentucky, and Michigan. The closest project we have to Mount Pleasant is in Midland down the road, it's Center City Lofts, which is a 55-unit project, and it's currently under construction, opening next spring. And so, this evening seems like a long time coming to me personally, because I first reached out to the city close to three years ago with, when Bill Merdeza and Jacob Kane were on staff, and at the time, there was a prohibition on pilots, which effectively eliminates these affordable housing projects for competitive consideration. These projects, we apply for these federal tax credits, and it's a very competitive process. There, the, the demand for these projects far outpaces the supply, and so in order to effectively use this limited resource, the state releases a competitive criteria every couple of years. And one of the competitive aspects that these projects are graded against each other on is, is a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. And the reason for that, it accomplishes a couple of things. These projects, when we, to take a step back, I suppose, when, when we apply for these tax credits, and if we receive an award, the tax credits are actually sold to private investors, namely large banks, that they take the, the value of the tax credits and we get less than a dollar value per dollar on the sale of those credits. And what that does is it provides equity to fund the hard cost construction of the project. And so in turn, for that equity that's put into the project, we're capped in the amount of rents, in the amount of rent that we can charge, and that's based off of the median income of the county, and then more specifically to the municipality that you're located in, based off the market. So there's a median income, and then we have to average out to 60% of the median income, that is what the average median income for the project will be. That said, we have a range of incomes that we will be serving, it's anywhere from 30 to 80%, and the idea behind that is to have a broad range of incomes and demographics in the project, and not to concentrate one certain AMI within a single project. And so since we are capped in the amount of, of rent that we can charge, it's a little different from a, a market rate scenario where if costs increase, or if real estate taxes go up, they then pass on that cost to the residents. We cannot do that, nor would we want to do that. And so, the reason the state rewards a pilot is because it sets the project up for long-term success. Spire is a long-term owner of all of our projects, we're not a developer that develops a project and then immediately sells it. We develop it, we oversee the leasing process, and then we also earn it, own it, and manage it for the entirety of the compliance period. That said, we're, we're solely a development shop, we just do the development arm of it, we don't construct, we put the projects out to a competitive bid in order to get the best pricing. We find that you get better pricing when it's a competitive situation between multiple general contractors. We also use a third-party management company. This project, we anticipate, will be managed by KMG Prestige, which is based out of Mount Pleasant, they're across the street. They're one of the largest affordable housing managers in the state, and they manage all of our Michigan projects. And so, with that, to get into some of the specifics on the project, we, when we first heard of the, the pilot to a pilot, we were in a rush to find a competitive scoring site. The, the QAP, the scorecard, if you will, the, the QAP Qualified Allocation Plan has recently been updated, and so we had to find a site that we felt would be a competitive site that would receive a funding award. There's no sense in applying just anywhere, because if it's not competitive, then it's not going to receive an award. And so that led to a few different areas in town, and we were really excited to get under option on this particular property that we're proposing this evening, because it is in a location that's highly desirable by Mishta, it's close to a lot of amenities, it's specifically called out for increased density and residential and the future land use plan, and Mishra rewards those types of projects. And we felt that it would be a, a great infill opportunity rather than a greenfield expansion. We like to develop in areas that are infill and in walkway areas close to amenities for our future residents. So we have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units- So we have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. I gave a larger printout of our proposed site plan. The, we need to be around fifty units for the project to work financially. There's a few factors for that. The MISTDA has a credit efficiency that they're trying to to target in order to make sure that developments are responsibly using the resource. And so fit around fifty units is the economies of scale needed to have a project that works financially. And so what we're proposing is a forty-nine unit development, a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. I had met with city staff regarding the proposal, and we tried to take into account the percentage of units relative to reported need for the different bedroom types. We have a large number comparatively of three-bedroom units to many of these types of projects, because we were told there's a great need for that. The current proposal, we have a four-story building and a two-story building on the two respective lots. The property is zoned for this, and the the site plan should comply fully with zoning. And we also included a couple of representative renderings of what the project may look like. There's a four-story rendering in there, and that's what we have in mind currently for the four-story building. And we also included a three-story rendering, and that wasn't a mistake. We, I anticipate this will be somewhat of a conversational hearing in that, you know, if we, if there's a desire for three-story buildings as opposed to a four-story building, we might be able to do two, three-story buildings if we lose a few units. But I understand that the pilot policy incentivizes density, and then also the zoning is up to ninety-six units an acre. So I was hoping to get a little bit of feedback from commission on on their thoughts as to what would be the ideal property type, whether it's three stories, two of them, or a four-story and a two-story. So at any rate, that's a brief overview of Spire Development as a whole and what we're proposing this evening. And so with that, I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
One of the things I'd like to ask you is if you did, if you changed the two-story to a three-story, where would you include additional parking?
So we would decrease the four-story to a three-story.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the three, the four-story would be decreased, not the two-story increased?
The two-story would be increased and the four-story would be decreased.
Okay.
We may have to lose around four units if we did that. We're trying to keep it to a one-o parking ratio. The zoning doesn't require that, but that's just something in practicality that we like to have. But we're open to any feedback on that.
Thanks, Mayor. What's in this location right now?
So there's a a single-family home on the square lot on Mill Street, and that is currently being rented by the owner. And then the Walnut Street parcels are vacant. There used to be a storage shed that I believe burned down a handful of years ago, so they're currently vacant.
And then what's, as you go farther north, is that more rentals?
That's right. Yeah, on on Walnut, that there are a couple of apartment buildings. And then to the east, there are more single-family homes, but there are also rental homes.
And then to the south, is that where the one apartment complex already is? Or is there, are there more houses in between?
So there are more houses to the southeast. To the north is where the existing apartment buildings are.
Oh.
Yeah, along Walnut.
Farther north? Oh, okay, I didn't, thank you.
So that area where the proposed two-two-story building is, that's, that's the, is that a house that has three apartments in it? That's not a single-family house, if it's what I'm thinking.
Right, that's what I thought, too, with like a staircase separating them.
Yeah, that's a three, so that's just going to be torn down.
Yeah, well, we plan on tearing that down.
Okay, I understand. I was just trying to understand where this is. So it's, okay, it makes makes sense. I I think the more you can put in, the better. I think we have so many, so many requirements of of density and and how we've said we don't want things to be so close, but we're past that. I'm past that. I think the idea of having as many affordable housing units as we can, because our community continues to struggle with it. And quite honestly, we've had, actually, I saw one of the, one, I was, I was looking at the Kate, one of KMG's clients, and one of them, I know, and he was going to put in a twenty million dollar project and couldn't get past all of the junk that needs to get passed. And now it's in somewhere else and not here. And so I think I don't want to see that happen again, because it, I I think as a community, we need to, we need to reduce as many barriers as we can for people to put developments here and make it, make it as least restrictive as possible. And so I think for us to put as many as you can, and it just makes sense.
Yeah. Those are apartment complexes, that's apartment complex.
So I have a hypothetical question. So if we, if you transformed the two-story building into a three-story building, you are saying therefore that the four-story building will become another three-story building. So you have two three-story building.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
One qualitative aspect to the development that I failed to mention is that we will be building it to lead zero energy efficiency standards. That's a, it's a requirement by the state, and also it is better for the residents that end up living there as well, because it drastically decreases the utility costs. In regards to utilities, we'll, we'll be paying for water and sewer. Residents simply pay for electricity. And we will be incorporating both indoor and outdoor bicycle parking as a part of the development as well.
Okay, good. I was going to ask about that. Not every, no, maybe not everybody would have a car. You know, we want the city to be bikeable and walkable. So are you considering that? What about green space?
So we, we did take into account the bikeability, if that's a word.
That's good.
By trying to incorporate some of the bicycle parking. In regards to green space, it is a very tight site. When we were originally throwing around concept ideas, we had a playground in one area. But with the zoning, I believe there's a desire to have as much frontage as possible and then to fit the parking. We were struggling to incorporate much green space in it. So there won't be, it'll be, we'll, we'll be utilizing as much of the parcel as we can.
So I, I noticed that in one of your diagrams, you have playground. Are you going to get rid of the playground? I mean, then it almost seems like it's not children-friendly.
If if we have space for it, we like to include the playground.
Even a small one would be okay.
Yeah, a size-appropriate one. A lot of three-bedroom units, we do get a lot of families, and they do appreciate the playground, if there's space for it.
Okay.
This property would be one of the closest to our public parks that you could possibly get either, too, though. And the whole, it backs all up to the railroad tracks and the the woods. And I mean, it's a great location. I lived there.
I, I, I understand. I understand. But in the evening, you know, some evenings.
This is true.
You want your kids out there.
They can watch TV.
Yeah, right. No, they can't, you know, they should go out there and go play, you know, swing, search or something.
My, my question is, is, I'm assuming it's a bonus that it's close to Green Tree Grocery?
Yes, yeah, we do need to be within a certain distance of of grocery stores. Also, a public library. There's the, the library right down the road, which is very helpful.
Question, it's for the, so proposed, the four-story building. It's on two lots and everything. It's just the, those two lots. It's just a large building. I drove by that space earlier today and everything. And just, yeah, as you were saying earlier, it is a very small space and everything. So I'm just kind of looking at that. Can you talk about?
So on that note, sorry. So we are acquiring the two lots that are vacant. We're also acquiring a vacant section of the existing apartment development. There's some unutilized green space that's vacant, and we will be acquiring a portion of that.
Gotcha, okay, that makes a bit more sense there then. Can you talk a bit about, again, how rent is capped on this? Like, like, just how, how that plays out? This is my first time working with a pilot program or this program at all.
So every year, the federal government releases median income data by county, for every county in the, in the, in the country. And the rent caps are based off of a median income, and we take a percentage of the median income. So for these tax credit affordable housing projects, the average median income for the project is sixty percent. Now, we have some thirty percent AMI households, and then we offset that with eighty percent. So we currently, I believe I have the mix in the proposal, but we have thirty, forty, sixty, and eighty proposed currently. And so the, the rent cap is based off of the income levels to qualify for those AMI levels. And that's updated annually. So if the, if the median income goes up, because there's job growth or things of that nature, then rents can go up, but we, we don't always do that. When we get good tenants in our projects, we like to keep them, and we like to keep them as steady as possible. We only do that if it's a necessity of costs are out, outpacing, you know, the, the revenue and such. So that's how it works at a high level, is that the government releases median income data, and the project will be set at an average of sixty percent. I will also add that the project will be affordable for forty-five years. We're requesting a thirty-year pilot, and that is because how these tax credit projects typically work is you have to go through the process again to refurbish the project after, say, twenty years, thirty years, whatever the time may be. The pilot policy has space for one renewal. And so since the project will have to be affordable for forty-five years, that would put us at a disadvantage as far as upkeep. So that's why we have it as a thirty-year, which would allow us to keep it affordable and keep it well-kept, based off the current pilot policy. The, there's a restrictive covenant on the property when you receive tax credits. So it's not a matter of, it, it is locked in on the deed to remain affordable for those forty-five years. So it won't be in perpetuity, it'll be for forty-five years. Yes?
Are any of the units, like, zero-grade entry accessible, first four?
Yeah, yeah, the, the state has accessibility requirements for these projects. So we will be meeting that for, and they, in fact, they have higher accessibility requirements than building code.
Kind of going back on the lead zero energy efficiency standard, what is that? Like, can you talk about about that?
Yeah, so there are certain green energy certifications for buildings. There are third parties that certify that the buildings meet energy efficiency requirements, and there's different grades. Lead zero energy is the highest energy efficiency grade, grade that exists through the lead program. When we get the project fully designed, we may go to Enterprise Green, or there's a few other programs, but they'll all be the same equivalency. So the idea behind it is that it's the, the highest energy efficiency that exists currently that can be certified through the lead program. And how that is accomplished is we have a, a third-party architect and energy consultant do an audit of the plans initially to make sure that it will meet the requirements. And we design it to pass a test by another third party that verifies that it meets the energy efficiency requirements.
And heating and cooling for the building, do you know, like, I apologize if this is too minutia at this level, but like, in, in built AC or like internal AC, heating and everything?
Yeah, yeah, but to meet that level, very highly efficient appliances, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Help me understand how this benefits the city of Mount Pleasant.
So it benefits a few ways. One of the biggest ones is that it increases the stock for individuals that are looking for an affordable place to live that may be employed, but they simply don't make enough to afford a mortgage payment, or they may not make enough to afford the market-rate rent that a lot of times in in college towns is driven up by the university. And so when renters are able to find a place that they can afford to live in, they pay no more than thirty percent of their income towards their living expenses, that allows them to save discretionary income that they can use to support local businesses, that they can use to save for, maybe they want to go to school, or maybe they want to save up for their first home. Also, the site specifically, its proximity to downtown. You're going to have more density in a walkable area of residents that are no longer rent burdened, so they have discretionary income, so they will support local businesses, and they will actually be able to afford to do so. And then also, this project will be built to to modern accessibility standards. So a lot of times, we also find seniors that are looking to downsize out of a single-family home are drawn to these projects because they're brand-new, accessible, they can use their units freely. And that opens up single-family home stock in the city for empty nesters and seniors looking to downsize. The, the project being built to such high standards will, you know, I heard there were some energy efficiency goals to be targeted in the city, since we'll be building at such a high energy standard, that'll help to to meet those goals. And so I think those are a few, off the top of my head, reasons that this would benefit the city of Mount Pleasant.
Good.
Any other questions?
What's the blue dotted lines on the diagram?
I'll have to take a peek.
Those are the deer trails.
I think it's the non-residential parts, the common areas. Any common area?
Oh, in the buildings, yeah, that, that's common space.
No, no, on the outside. There is, it looks, it's like dashed lines, yeah, just over the whole of the map.
That's, that's the topography.
Topography, thank you.
They probably should have taken that off for.
It is a very steep incline down towards the railroad tracks. I'll leave that to the architects.
I just have one question about the parking. I'm guessing that there's not going to be any over, any protected parking with a structure overhead?
No, no, it'll be surface parking.
Any other questions?
So I'm curious, what might be the average, let's say, in terms of demographics? What would be the, you said sixty percent, but in terms of dollars, I'm thinking dollars. Because if you said to somebody sixty percent, I don't know what sixty, yeah.
Yep.
So what would that be?
So it's based off the number of individuals in the household. I do have the AMI breakdowns and the income requirements in the proposal. But for example, so for a one-person household, so just one individual, to go down the list, a thirty percent in two thousand twenty-three is fifteen thousand nine hundred. Forty percent is twenty-one thousand two hundred. Sixty percent is thirty-one thousand eight hundred. Eighty percent is forty-two thousand four hundred. And that would be for a single, single individual. Now, say a family with with four people, an eighty percent household would be sixty thousand five sixty. We would rent up to five-person household, and that would be sixty-five thousand four forty on the high end for eighty percent AMI.
Okay, so number of rooms, is that max?
Yeah, we, we currently have twenty-two one-bedrooms, fifteen two-bedrooms, and twelve three-bedrooms.
Okay. Okay. Because I'm think, the reason why I'm thinking about this is because there are also students who, you know, they graduate and they want to stay, but, you know, they don't have enough income to go buy any place, you know.
And that's what, part of what this program is great for is young professionals just starting out in their career, starting salaries oftentimes can qualify to live in here. Now, if a individual qualifies to live in the project, and then they subsequently get a raise, they're not evicted or anything along those lines, they're allowed to stay in the unit. On the note of students, it's, it's not student housing. If there's a full-time student, they, they cannot qualify to live. But that said, if, say, there's a, a family and one of the spouses. But that said, if, say, there's a, a family and one of the spouses decides to go to school, then they could stay. It just has to do, there's some nuances to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate your.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Manager DeSens, do you have anything to add to this?
Just a reminder that we will come back at our August 14th meeting for further discussion and for consideration.
All right, so at this time, the work session is closed, and we're going to move to closed session. So anyone who is part of the audience and is not supposed to be here for the closed session will have to leave. I do need to ask the commission to motion to consider the closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act to discuss a strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of the collab, collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion to go into close?
I motion to go into a closed, closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the strategy and negotiation sessions connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
All right. Do I have to do a roll call, a roll call vote? Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Yes.
Mayor Perishbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, so at 8:49, we will move into closed session.